I left them. So, so that lady blocked me online and I went to all the admins of your groups and they're like, you can't provide a chip, like chip thing they put in dogs. And then they found it.
What happened?
Hi, we got out a while back and it was really far away and they found it and they kept it. It was a rough day yesterday.
I forgot my mask. The school district, you don't ever forget a mask. No, I didn't.
We all have pictures of our parents. Nationwide stuff, the person's all the way up in Northern Illinois. And I was like, I found this bird. It's been scattered and it's cold and there's a way it makes me die like.
I get.
Can I help you? When will you receive them?
I can't remember.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. He looks for me if I'm not out there.
This is what we do not have. So this isn't right?
Yeah, it's correct. She told me that she didn't have this part. Yeah, it becomes a stick. Yeah, everything right. Okay, you got that. And then before we leave, I'll give you this. I'll give you this.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, we're gonna have a board meeting in City Hall, Illinois, February seventh, two thousand twenty-two, six thirty P. M. Need roll call, please. Mayor Lance here.
Claudia. She wouldn't know if you were gonna get her name wrong, but better.
I'm waiting.
Stacy Kimmel, here.
Linda Johnson, here.
Christina Kristen Barry, is here.
Yep.
Please, then, pledge of allegiance, please.
Our flag is raised to the sky, and the United States of America, and to your country, the brothers and sisters, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the bills and the financial report.
Mayor, please wait just a moment, please. I'm not sure the third party together here.
Now are we recording?
Mayor, will you announce again what day it is and so forth? The recorder was not on.
Bill of the Belmont Board Meeting, Belmont, Illinois, February seventh, two thousand twenty-two, six thirty. Roll call, please. Mayor Lance here.
Claudia.
Christina Kristen Barry.
Stacy Kimmel, here.
Linda Johnson, here.
We gonna go to the pledge allegiance again or not?
We don't need to.
My name, my first name?
Uh, can I have a motion to approve the past, uh, minutes?
January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, minutes. I was first.
Okay, the motion's been made to approve the minutes of January seventeenth meeting. Linda Johnson has made the motion and Christina Kristen Barry has seconded the motion. Uh, need a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has passed, all ayes.
I'd like a motion to approve the bills and financial reports presented this evening, February seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
I have a question on this. Why is the front here really so much?
Yeah, that. Um, is that where the, you're just eating that, Linda?
Yeah, that's.
Which one are we asking? Is it eighty-six five for the telephone from frontier?
That's our telephone on the internet here in the building.
So that's the amount we usually use approximately.
Why is it so high? The internet's just that high here?
Um, look at the I device on here when you get a chance. Look at the I device bill. I question that too, on my first page on the board. That should make your list, yeah. My internet in that house looks like sixty-five.
Eighty-six? Really? Do they always get, is it high?
Linda?
Probably charge your business rate too.
Sweet. Um, while we're on financials, remember last month, we had that large bill for frontier where the line got pulled from the ground. Um, I had called in on that and we're looking to see, because I was told they were not going to send us a, a charge on that. So I'm still working on that. That bill is not listed. Um, it will not be until I get another call back from them and then we'll be posting.
So that's not on the current bill?
No, it is not. And I was able to get the, uh, finance charge from Herschel Johnson Nicholson, um, forgiven. They had tried to charge us over thirty dollars for finance charge that the tractor was fixed and that was over, um, that bill was high, that's why that finance charge was high. But they, um, they did forgive it and apologized and took us off of the, uh, financing because they realized municipalities are usually much behind unpaid bills. So we shouldn't see a finance charge from them again. Okay, um, I motion to pass the bills. Christina, did you get a chance to look at that?
No.
Statement thing, okay. The only thing that what, the, that one that she brought in tonight, the, uh, that counts payable work, there we go.
Is there any way I could get a copy of them? I left my home financial. There's about three questions I, I messed up. I left them on my truck. Is there a way I can look, get them?
Um, after they're approved, you can't have a copy of the bills after they're approved.
I got them. No, the financial, I already got them in my truck. This, but I needed, I forgot them. I wanna look at them again. Cause I got questions on them. I already got them. I get them every month.
Yes, but you cannot have tonight's until they are approved.
Well, how come I, I got them? She had them to me last week.
You have last month's.
Okay, I wanna ask a question about last month. Sorry about that. That's, that's my understanding.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the finances. Is there a second?
Christina's not been looking at it.
Okay.
So for Walter Accounting, that's because we don't have a clerk right now?
Yes, we don't have a treasurer.
Treasurer?
We don't have a treasurer. She's a bookkeeper.
Wow, this is some silly book. What do we use internet here for? Is there something specific that we're using it for?
Um, documents, Google documents? The, um, things that we have to do online?
Gotcha.
You know, like sam's dot gov, um, IDOT.
You sure it is? I'm gonna be a kid. Right, well, then we have to mark water.
Catch up.
Your mind?
No, it's somebody out of the package. We will need an updated copy of the financial that she brought this evening. I wonder if she would change that.
That's the list of bills.
Uh-huh. And, um, Christina, if you'll pick the time to go ahead and compare, this is the one that she delivered this evening. This was her draft. And so there's just a few changes there. And she will get a copy of this, this evening yet for us.
Are all the stars changes?
No, those are, they're down there where she says it's, the little asterisk down there tells you what the asterisk is. This is her fancy pen.
It is, I got it for Christmas.
I'm not really hard on it.
Best husband in the world, right?
She'll be more lines for a year or more.
So the motion's been made to, um, pass the financial, uh, materials that's handed out, uh, by Linda, of the bills and financial reports. Is there a second?
Could I have you speak up a little bit? You got masks on and you're facing each other and we can't hear you back here.
So the motion's been made to, uh, pass the financial statements as passed around. It was made by Linda, was seconded by Christina. Uh, roll call vote to, uh, approve this motion.
All in favor?
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion has passed, but the unanimity.
Water report?
Uh, water report is two point seven at the water tower, two point one at City Hall. Gang comment on that?
Something's about right. It's creeping up a little bit. We're gonna, I'm gonna try to look into, maybe turn it, uh, pump down a little bit tomorrow. Start creeping back up on us, it's cold weather.
New business?
Nope, you're on old business.
Oh.
You just skipped it.
Um, motor fuel packs rebuilt grant in process. Um, nothing going on there, waiting for the ground to get hard. They'll finish cleaning off the ground for us. Then we'll talk about chat, fitting it in. USDA grant, city, city hall roof. Did anybody get an opportunity to look at those estimates? Anybody got any more ideas to try and someone else?
So.
John Brown's out of the picture.
Yeah, I can get ahold of him anyway. I called him and he wouldn't even answer. So, um, whenever that guy came to look, he did the estimate and he had a guy named Dustin Claus with him. And I talked to Dustin, cause he's the one who actually did my house. Um, he just drove it, one of his workers drove a truck that had what's-his-face's-name on it. So I talked to him and, um, he's willing to come out and give estimates, cause he was here whenever they did it the first time. He said he's willing to do it. He's willing to get anything that you guys need. And he said, once you guys get it approved, if you wanna go with him, he can start it in a week, so.
And who was that?
His name's Dustin Claus. It's C, it's K L A.
A L A U S.
He's a good man.
And is he? He's fantastic.
Is he working with David Brown or is he was?
He's done work with him, but he does not work with him. He's an independent contractor.
Okay.
Okay, so the name of the company is Dustin Claus Incorporated or something like that?
Um, he just said he's an independent contractor. I don't know if he really has a name for his business. And I asked him if he was licensed in roofing and he said he is not state licensed in it, but he can get a license. Uh, let me tell you exactly what he said before I'd say the wrong thing.
The interior work doesn't have to be, um, licensed, but the roofing has to be.
So he says, I am not pers, or I personally am not licensed, a licensed roofer, but I can work through another contractor license if that works. Is that an option?
If the other contract licenser would give us the bid and he works under him, that, that should work.
Yeah, and he's great for interior too. I mean, he's, he's awesome and he's fast and he's very reasonable.
He's outstanding. He's a, he's a.
We, we need the estimate.
Very good guy.
I tell you what, as soon as you can get it, have him email it to us.
Okay, just the board email?
Uh-huh. And if, if it comes down to, you know, cause we've been playing with this for so long, that if the board decides to call a special meeting just to approve his bid, then we can submit it. Cause we've got more than enough bids. We just don't have one that we all have agreed upon to submit, other than Mr. Brown. And then he, he had some loops and some holes in his and the architect was looking for more information. And I called him daily, I left messages and.
Yeah, I called his cell phone, cause Dustin gave me a cell phone number and he didn't call me back. I left a voicemail, it was pretty detailed.
So Dustin, sorry, Dustin Claus is willing to do every aspect of the work, not just the roof or a certain part?
I ask about the roof, but he does interior as well. What exactly he's done interior? I know we said the door, anything else?
What we had, um, gotten, um, approved, approved so far by, our grant's up to for twenty-five thousand. And the things that we have listed pretty well fit into that category under that amount. Some of them were just a little bit over, so if we had decided on one of the other ones, we would just have to pay the little bit of a difference. Um, it included a new roof, metal or TPO, we have different estimates. Um, we are really wanting to go pitched, just cannot afford it. Um, two garage doors and openers. Um, interior door going to the garage here. We need a fireproof door going to that, into that building, for the garage. Interior door for the, um, closet next to the restroom, because files are in there. And then interior door, um, for the office. So three, three interior doors, two garage doors with openers, roof, and then, um, ceiling tile throughout the building.
So I can't speak for him, but just speaking to him and knowing him personally, he's, he'll be more than willing to do all that. He's, he's awesome.
So were all the interior doors supposed to be fireproof?
And I'm saying fireproof, they aren't fireproof. They have to be a good door like that one, that interior door right there. Fireproof is a whole nother, that's a, that's a bigger deal yet. Where this is a wooden door?
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to get away from. We want a solid door, solid. That's the word I should be using. And we can review the, um, everyone's got copies of the other estimates and see how they wrote it to know what exactly we're looking at. And so when you're talking to him, if you just describe it that way, we'll get probably more accurate. Um, twenty-five thousand is what the grant is, um, for. And if we have to go over and a little bit out of our pocket, then that's something.
But we don't want to if we don't have to.
And so far, we've been able to get most of the bids within that twenty-five thousand, so. Um, anything else on the, oh, the, uh, Illinois ARPA, again, has anyone gone to the site and tried to study up on that any? Okay, um, we need to start doing that. That is, uh, submission needs to be done in April on the CARE program. Um, I did get the information submitted by the deadline. We were granted up to eleven thousand, three hundred off the top of my head. Um, we don't have enough expense to be able to get reimbursed for all that, but we are, we are trying to get it reimbursed and it's for, um, payroll is what we're trying. And that seemed to be what everybody was pretty well trying to get. And so that's what I have submitted. Um, they will get back with me and let me know where we're at on that and, uh, if I need any more additional information to upload to them.
And that falls under the Illinois ARPA?
No, Illinois, um, ARPA is the American Rescue Plan and it's separate. The CARE program is the one they started when COVID first hit and we had to, we couldn't have our meetings and everybody had to be separate. And so expenses during that time is what that was covering, March through December, March of, uh, was it nineteen?
That's when it started.
Yeah, so. I think it's twenty. My team was recently started, but the coverage started in twenty. That's what it is. Yeah. That's all I got on that, guys. Now ready for new business?
New business?
Yep.
We need to go to closed session to discuss the employees' past closed session meetings review. Do I have a motion to go to closed session?
Closed session, I first.
I second.
Excuse me, the motion has been made to go to closed session. Linda Johnson made the motion and Stacy Kimmel, uh, seconded the motion. Need a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to do closed session now.
And so you need to save the time for the record?
Time is six fifty-three.
Okay, and then you will stop, stop your computer. At this time, guys, we can either get up and go into the other room or we can ask the visitors to leave. What have we just offered?
Cold outside, I don't go outside. I've got a big back room back here. Oh, nuts.
You'll take this with you for your play.
Uh-huh. And, um, David, you are invited to attend, attend this meeting in the closed session.
Here's my time sheet. I haven't hit it in yet. I'm gonna try and get that to you before I forget.
Um, does anyone have any instructions to give to attend the closed session meeting? So they move on to Elise's tournament, it's here.
In here?
Yep. Um, I think it's in April. Probably be cold, of course, but at least you don't have to drive an hour. Is, uh, Lexi's playing, right, Eric?
Mm-hmm.
I changed. Gosh, wow, no, oh my goodness. Time goes by so fast.
She'll be the last one. Bethany's just not interested. She's, she's like, she's recording the video. And Maddie, I just don't think, I just, you know, who replaced him all and he's still watching, so you get, I'm just true. He just don't have a better advantage.
That's the bias, the bias is.
He's just fun, but he's not. See, it's not. We're doing anything.
Yeah. And we, especially thought the bias might be the athletic one, other, out of my three, but then we, she came home today and she said, uh, I made my decision. I said, what are you talking about? She said, I told Mrs. Wall, since we have a bass guitar, I'm gonna wear that for jazz band next year. I'm like, okay. So I guess I gotta get mine fixed, cause my top pickup is short out. So I'll have to buy a new one or take it apart and see if we can't fix it. That girl, she's everything, she accepts life for everything. She's got some.
Hey, we're not signing for none of this.
Yeah.
Don't do that. Well, Jill, she was with my mom, my mom will do that. My dad loves to do that. My mom will.
Yep.
So, you know.
And I'm trying to be better.
Everything, I know, that's.
I've not really had that.
Well, for a time.
When I started coaching, I just, I couldn't, I had to start saying no, because I just didn't have the time. And now I'm like, I'm not doing that again, not after that experience with that one parent that just, I couldn't stand. It's under her screen, that her ten-year-old daughter, he was a dynamite pitcher.
Dynamite. There's a stuff on, and this guy with you.
And I'm like, I said, you need to stop right now. And that was the end of it. I'm like, I can't, cause Elise is upset. That's okay, I'll be mostly.
My sister's, they were very athletic, very competitive, all through colleges and, you know, he just came out of the hospital. He played some basketball in high school, but, um, and baseball, but not, you know.
Yeah.
But, um, you can do a good effort, but unless you're not that good, yeah, your mom won't let you.
But, you can do a good effort, but unless you felt that good, yeah, your mom don't mind that. Annalise was so sad, the hardly home game they were gonna have, got canceled for the, all this stuff. And I don't know if they're really scheduled, like they're gonna play five games, they're gonna get canceled, cause kids, teams are having, they could have a team, cause they'd get sick with COVID. And they're quarantined and stuff, you know, that's all Lexi's team was.
Well, one was it all made. And then she did get to sub for the team, team Illinois, so they're really good. And she got to pitch for that, so that was fun.
Yeah, it's, something is fun.
It is.
Yeah, cause. Try new things as, sometimes you do something mom won't get to do.
Yeah.
I'm ready for every weekend. I'll be sunburned, and then I was like, her hair's getting really bad, I said, cause I was sitting up in the sun for hours, it's getting dark.
It was hot and miserable.
It definitely was, Alabama, that was bad. I mean, I got in that cage and was pitching to the girls to warm them up, and I thought for sure I was gonna have heat stroke, it was miserable. And then the little girl we had, she was only eight years, but we, she's playing up and she's, she started for me, she was excellent. I pitched her and she hit a lighter right back at me, got me in the hand, thought it broke my hand, I said, okay, we're done in the cages today. You guys are gonna kill me or I'm gonna.
Kill someone or something.
Do that anymore, I'm getting too old, my shoulder hurts when I pitch to her, I think it's time to get it up, too old. Then we went and picked up the boys from wrestling, I told them, I'll give you five bucks and you can drive my car. He's like, I'm on it, he's saving up for something, he's collecting video game consoles, even the old one. He's got his eye on this PlayStation, they, they, only PlayStation except for the new ones that he doesn't have, he really has no interest in the new ones, he wants the old classic ones. And so that's what he's saving his money for, go buy it.
I'm surprised Damon's just walking up to my.
I probably got a real pong game. Well, we walked, cause he forgot his, his tire was low, which I says, fine, I stand up every morning at the school for half hour, this is nothing. I thought for sure we were all going down this morning, cause it had melted and went down. And it was just a glistening sheet of ice there where the sidewalk curves, it goes out of the front of the school, so we had to put out cones and stuff, so. Nobody fell, so lucky for us.
We came back home through, from Grayville to Brown's through Fort Wayne yesterday, it's still solid sheet.
I'm surprised they have school today.
I must, Carmine called up, didn't they?
Yes. Um, like.
Carmine never called, I thought.
I know.
I figured since they announced no masks at school, then they probably canceled school today, but.
I kinda thought maybe when they, when they sent that, I got that email, let.
Did he buy any more masks today?
Mathias did, cause he's like, I'm just so used to it. I almost did, just cause I have, when I stand outside, it keeps my face warm. But I didn't wear all day, but like I said, in my classroom, I have all the shields in my, at my desk, so it doesn't matter. Cause a lot of those kids that I see need to see my mouth, they need to see all that, cause they're already struggling and. I made it a point to make sure I had shields at every desk, so I could, so it doesn't really matter in my.
That's my biggest concern, those little kids, I need to see the teacher's face.
I know, there are kids that if I see them out, they don't recognize me. They, they have no clue who I am.
Well, one of them are soaring speech, are they, they do that by watching their dad, as you saw.
Well, and they need to see the expression, they're learning about emotions and empathy, and when they can't see your face, they don't learn that. I don't ever, whenever I was with my character ed group, I didn't wear mine when I read to them, I would just have them stay back. And put the social distance, so they could see me. Today, though, was a different story, cause we were doing, we, we finished up a unit on kindness. And we went, we did what is kindness, and we talked about how you can becoming more kind, and then we did an kindness activity project. And then today, we did how to be kind to children, so some pictures and. It was great, it was so wonderful, they were all so, it's amazing the difference, how engaged they are. When they could see you and they got to be close and they could, you could see, they were begging, it was fun.
I'm wondering how it'd be the first day, if they would, it's good to know that they're alive.
At least in second grade.
Well, we would have been back in my day, we'd have felt free and wild.
I had one student stop me and say, she, she goes, my mom let us cut up a bunch of masks last night, I said, wow, I would do that quite yet. Cause that can be overturned really fast. What'd you say? Yeah, he's like, are you guys lying to me?
No, I'm, I'm home, yeah, but uptown board meeting, what's going on, anything?
Somebody's gonna get a mask. No, I said, do you want to see the email?
What's he gonna do, lie to town?
Hey Damon, I got Ryder's fundraiser money too, don't let me get you that.
Yeah, I just need to grab it, we paid it last weekend.
What the hell was that all about?
Yeah, I actually brought these ax today, so.
Oh, did you?
I gotta get paid companies and, I don't know, I think I gotta get some.
Maybe like tomorrow.
Thank you, he appreciates it, I appreciate the leaders.
I wanna be the winner.
I'm so tired of fundraising.
Harper, Harper down, Harper was down.
I'm sorry, I don't have no kids.
Oh my lord.
That's what I got into, it sent me to wrong Jana.
Fundraisers constantly, so we really don't pay a lot out of pocket for bands, do we? I mean, they do all that.
Heard the baseball and softball.
Yeah, my mom just, I just give her whatever the band's doing, she takes it to the bank, and people just buy as they come in, and I'm, I don't have to do anything, right?
I don't know, there's a couple of those boys like Ryder's baseball, boy broke his leg.
Yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
Really?
He hits a ton.
I'm hoping I get to actually watch him this year, since I didn't get to watch him at all. I don't think.
You went to one, no?
No, I couldn't, cause I think they thought rained out that one time I was gonna be able to.
Yeah, Groop next, you watched him though.
Yeah, but I think you'd watch.
That lost twice last year.
I know, and I never got to.
See on there, and so team will be in this year.
Yeah, they, he just sub for him last year, but he's on the team this year.
They did give that sleep retreat too.
The tryouts.
He was on the protection bill last year.
Yeah, and that was.
I figured that, I figured that was gonna happen.
They got freaking a league up there.
They're really just trying to wear us out, is what they're doing.
Yeah, well, we played, we played what, fall ball?
Maybe teams.
We're up next, we play out in summer, the league ball, and then we went right back to fall ball.
Yeah, Blue Jekker, and then he put old, he said, water on that problem.
Since two thousand eighteen.
Oh, well, I haven't been doing mantra, cause I'm on the water horse, I keep missing the number one and two, cutting out on time.
Keeping them doing that stuff, and they're so disciplined, like when Annalise.
Well, they got some, Miles said they got a lot of stuff coming out of Roxanna, so them boys be finishing time over there.
And, cause I think, cause they're so used to.
Yeah, so they got their contracts about done up here at Robson. At Prince, at Robson, I talked to Flops morning, said they just, they cut everything back and start, gonna be starting haul out of St. Louis.
Ryder's head deflated, it's the biggest problem. He start, he starts getting, his head starts getting.
So you gotta haul, what are you doing tomorrow?
Annalise likes to.
Well, he's had a lot of accomplishments.
Pete with him.
He's pretty athletic.
Where you going, Shawnee Town?
They do a good job, they're ready to get out in the yard and.
Okay, hey, how hard are you tomorrow?
The only thing girls gotta do is just the PE, and then, you know, we were cheerleaders, but we didn't get to play, uh, competitive sports. It was just beginning to start, and I was, and I was in the year, and I tried to get a raise basketball.
I think they had basketball too, when I was.
They were just getting that started.
I dreamt girl being on the wrestling team.
You wouldn't believe how many girls wrestle.
That's why Annalise gets that, uh.
Nervous that you had to wrestle that girl, I thought, oh, that, that would've been bad.
She wasn't bad.
Annalise gets at basketball, that's why I said, you'd be a heck of a wrestler, cause she's so, just, she's stocky, she's tough, she's strong, I'm like, you. Think she could hold her own, the rest, that's mean.
She has to be the only one.
I know, it's that red hair, I don't know. It is. I'm pretty nice for the most part, right, Damon? Look at him, he's like, mm-mm.
You have your moments.
I try to keep it in check.
That boy, I was telling Christine, at tryouts, he was first to second, and he slid.
Oh my gosh.
The dirt and it snapped his leg.
I had to walk away, I knocked through it.
Just right half, it was, it was bad, he's.
Where was he from?
Uh, he's from Medinville, I mean, he's a big boy, he made the team, but. He's at, he's at practice, last two practices, so, and it's about, you know, of course, that was what, back in June, or that was July.
I can't remember, it was July, in the July.
So he broke his leg in July, he's back practicing with him now.
It was the most awful thing I've ever seen.
And his mom came up there and I was like, she's just as calm, walking out there.
Well, she's a nurse.
But she's a nurse practitioner, after I figured out, I was like, had to be my mom, she'd been hysterical.
Like, that's not close enough to your heart, get up.
I mean, he was screaming, I'm just not mad at him, or.
I had a kid pull a tooth today in class, so, you know how that went.
He told me, um, was it Dr. Johnny, when, didn't want to take your stitches out, that's right, Dr. Johnny wanted to. Was it him?
What?
Was it Dr. Johnny, didn't want to take your stitches out?
I don't remember. For what, my, when I got my car wreck?
Yeah.
I am not used to being in the medical field, I'll say that. Props to you, I can't do it, I can't eat, that kid goes, my tooth, and I'm like, no. Don't let, just go get a tissue. I don't know why, I mean.
Really gross, yeah, I mean, about an alien, her neck.
Ooh, yeah, I wouldn't have been able to look at that, now, I had a kid.
She showed me today.
I can hold any kid's hair back while they're throwing up in the trash can, but, no blood, no wee wee teeth, no thanks. Now that would have, I would have passed out, Damon would have had to take care of that, I couldn't have done it.
No, I can't figure why she was, why she was screaming, cause she done her stuff, you know.
Yeah, and she was probably hidden.
It was, the first thing I seen that one here, and that, I didn't feel it down here. That's the first thing she showed me the day when she got there. I'll be there again tomorrow, all day. Probably, Jordan's gonna tell, Friday, I think.
They sent me a Snapchat from Tuscaloosa or somewhere.
Oh, yeah?
Four years ago.
She can go hang out with my dad, now that he's been retired a whole two weeks, he is driving everybody nuts. He's texting me in the middle of the day.
Currently, Tim was retiring, this is his last week log, and she says, I don't know what I'm doing.
My dad texted me the other day, I mean, in the middle of the day, like ten thirty, I'm in class, and I see this message from my dad, and he said. He's like, I got a question for you, I'm thinking it's important, I don't even remember what it was, it was nothing, I said, Dad, I do still work, I know you're tired, but I'm still at work. I said, I asked him today, he called me, he calls me every day now, like, as soon as he thinks I'm off work. I said, so you wanna be the official practice runner? We got a job for you, if that's what you wanna do, drive everybody to practice.
Yeah, he'll give you that job.
Yeah. He's been wanting to retire so long, he said, he's so tired of five factory work, cause he worked at, he worked for UTEC, but he worked at Snap-on for seventeen years before that.
Oh, really? I guess I know, he, he worked.
And now he, my, uh, my ex-husband, my kid's dad worked at UTEC, and that's how he got in there, and he.
How long's Snap-on been there?
I was, I was just starting to drive, so I was like fifteen, I'll be forty this year. So it's been a long time. I asked my dad, said, you wanna sub, he's like, we need subs, he goes, I don't know about that.
I think he'd be good at that.
Yeah, he's really good, he's good, it's fun, especially if you're just a paraprofessional, cause there's, that's a fun job. Teaching is the hard job. Now, I just wonder how long my mom will work. She just turned sixty-one. No, yeah.
I knew she was getting close to my age.
I'm just gonna work the red line, here you go.
That'd be me, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna enjoy it, work, I, I'll probably work my life.
My mom said, no, my dad's retired, she's gonna have to.
Said, I'm tired, and I'm setting up, cause I'm not doing what I've been doing, can't, can't do it no more.
I'm not a health person.
We used to get so attached to them once, you go, they do, you know, just, can't do it. And that's, and they wanted me to take on the orders in town, and I didn't wanna do it, and I took her, and I said, no, I said, from my duty, they don't. So now, what, in there two weeks, I found that she had cancer, yeah.
We're going to the nursing home sometime, I'm gonna go.
Did you see Kayla's post about that teacher in Northville?
Yes, she said it to me on Snapchat.
Holy cow, can't believe that.
So, we're gonna go visit my grandma, as long as she has COVID.
She told her kids that they had to wear masks today, which, I don't know what the, really was in Northville, but.
All of my character ed groups made Valentine's Day cards for the residents, so.
Really was their school, and now they're talking about fires lately, it's been there for a long time, cause they should have.
There's more than one person who was put on probation.
Was there?
I saw another post.
I would've seen it, I just now noticed it.
I wonder what Edwards County did, were they in on that ruling or?
Uh, their school governors are on.
Cause they're on probation, anyway, going against first man.
I can't keep up with them all, we get something new weekly, and I don't know how anybody can keep it straight.
Well, it's the same way with, really changing the rules.
So I figure, that's why I kept, I never took my partitions down for the kids, I said, you know, we can't go wrong, if that's up. There's no, we're violating anything if that's up. And they can see me, and I can hear them, and usually they, they have chose to wear their mask, and that they know that they can take it down with those things up. And then I just clean the desks after they leave. Assuming they made it home, okay, cause I haven't heard otherwise, they were probably home eating, I made steak nachos, that's what they're eating.
I'm gonna figure whatever, I'm gonna fix them up, cause I have both them girls in home tomorrow, I ain't got time to cook.
Where's Heather going?
She's got a dentist appointment, New Bird. Jordan's, you know, gone a long week, so.
I've got a giant pork wing I bought on sale, that I gotta find sometime to have him smoke it, this is so cold, it takes forever. We don't have a big commercial grade smoker.
We never know what Abby's gonna eat, though.
Is she really picky?
She didn't used to be, she getting more pickier.
I think that happens as they get older and they realize they have the ability to choose.
Wrong with nuggets and fries.
Now, that will go on for a while.
Probably cheese and applesauce, maybe rise them on that.
I didn't have, I met her with applesauce today, she wants, I didn't have it earlier.
Cheese, can she, or can't she?
She probably shouldn't.
See, Annalise went through that, and she was a little older than that, and we just pushed regular, like, not the sugary apple juice, but just constant juice. Apple juice, grape juice, apple sauce, but that girl, you could just cook her a can of green beans in both butter and salt and pepper, and she would just eat the whole thing. So once we figured that out, we're good. Now she won't touch them, burn out.
Yeah, I'd like to see what my mom's gonna do. My husband went around and around all day long.
She's still not wearing them.
Well, she ate some snowberries this morning, and I wondered, for Helen, I said, I would eat, and the legs couldn't give her breath and stuff, you know, they, they used to be there, and they. And I said, you need some, well, she went and said what she wanted, so I went in there, I was fixing pork chops and bar potatoes and macaroni cheese. And she kept, she's in there, I could hear her eat, I just acted like I didn't hear nothing, and I just kept, and she said, she says, hey, I said, what, she says, hey, did you eat? I said, I didn't ask you, didn't eat it. I didn't know either, I don't care. She didn't either, she didn't eat it, until supper time, not before I let it come down here, I didn't get to her, she ate it, I, but I asked her, she wanted it. I have a feeling we'll be up all night tonight, though.
How many times a week does the hospital send?
Twice. And then, it will come twice a week, that's going back.
I think the last time I told you, you started to get that around.
Yeah, she told you what her, she can't just not say.
I don't think I know, because, well, every day at work, there's something I've been storing, so. I'm sure they won't take nothing into, cause I don't.
I know, I'm not scared of grocery stores and stuff, you know.
She hasn't been back.
No, she hasn't, well, I was gonna get it down at Grayville, we found out when all this started, it all started, they said they'll get it down there, I had to respond.
No, like.
We never write that. She's lost so much weight, her, 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 her. I didn't know, she's got, well, she has a place somewhere along here, where. But, don't worry about it, yeah, when, when she fill it up, and then, I seen some put on shoes today, and I was watching, and a girl from Get Up, Get Another Place Back Here, I don't know why she's down there.
Like a skin hair thing, or a collar?
A little skin hair. And, hanging all the blood there and that stuff, that's one of the ways to just. She came twice a day, Chad member. And all of us are fresh legs.
Why did they really go to Spout?
That's what I know, they were, I mean, she was still eating. They don't, we do, we do, stone break, man.
Yeah, I might bring my water bill, we're gone. It's due. What's it due, what is today, seven? Count. I'll try to drop it off tomorrow. Well, the ice didn't melt, most of the day did. My shop, he didn't hardly melt, it's still slick, I've heard the job. Solid, solid ice. Guy, they had to pump his pump lit around the day, because the ice packed around a shaft, he had to heat that whole shaft up to get that, all around, to get that, where that pump, you wouldn't think. You'd think it'd still spin inside that ice, but it's actually froze, froze in there. Had to use a torch, get it.
I wouldn't be at the ball games, no. There's your last, but then, we can, we can, we can buy it for you. And we're done with Tom McCall. We'll jump since card, and then, and then, probably get us some stuff, and then. And Bill goes somewhere for you. Yeah.
There you go.
Oh, she's, she's today. She's gone, gone, well, they just, no, Ellie, we didn't have that in the mail, she cried, she stopped here.
Someone will be ready.
Let me hold her here. She's the only one that, I think, was ever back to that, I'm sure, I'm sure, I got it wrong.
Ready.
Got away on.
She told me to get us some food, I don't know.
Uh, the OJ memo board meeting reconvened. February seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Five. Seven twenty-two. Roll call, please, Mary Lance here.
Christina Kristenberry's here.
Stacy Kimmel, here.
Linda Johnson's here.
A lot easy.
Employees status. We, uh. Meeting, continue the meeting, employment or permanent part-time employees. All in favor of part-time employment.
Temporary part-time, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
The average hour is up.
Fifteen hours a week, each one. At twelve dollars an hour.
I make a motion to give them a raise.
Well, first, are we gonna maintain temporary, or are we gonna bring them on permanent, that's the question. So he asked for temporary, asked a nay for me.
Nay.
Nay on temporary. Okay, permanent? I'm a yes on that, permanent part-time employee? Yes for both.
Yes.
And you said raise, someone wrote that they wanna do a raise?
Yep.
Bring that to the board? Did you say?
I did, I'd like to make a motion to give a raise.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made to give the, uh, both employees a raise, been made by Stacy, the motion's been made by Stacy, seconded by Linda. All those in favor, please, uh, indicate, uh, saying aye, roll call vote.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, can I add something to that, as to how much I feel like their raise should be? Uh, being that they've only been in three and a half months, I feel like a quarter raise right now would be sufficient, I'd also like to, uh. Bring them back in in three months. To reconsider another raise, maybe possibly.
Ampere.
Ampere in a review, please.
Is this an amended motion?
No, I think it's just continuation of first motion that we give them the raise.
Yeah, because I said I wanted to say that.
It's been stated, um, twenty-five cents, all in favor, twenty-five cents.
Okay, so Stacy has made a motion that the, we have, um, two ayes for, um, giving a raise, and, um, so. That yours is three, makes three votes for aye to give a raise, and then, you've made the motion that the raise be twenty-five cents. Uh, and then another evaluation in three months, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Stacy and seconded by Christina, that the raise be twenty-five cents, and another evaluation, a review, employee reviewed, done in three months. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay.
And then Claudia, um, I don't believe we stated that the board has, uh, voted to bring them on permanent.
Part-time.
Permanent, part-time.
Oh, I thought we did that.
At fifteen hours.
Well, we voted it, but you didn't read it back to us.
Okay, so, uh. Who made the motion?
Um, me, Linda.
And the second?
Me.
Okay, motion was made earlier to make the, uh.
Employees.
Temporary part-time employees, to make them become permanent part-time employees, motion was made by. Linda, seconded by Stacy, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, but she'll catch it in the.
So.
Back to the mayor.
Close session minutes. Close session minutes.
Confidentiality vote, release or maintain confidentiality, maintain confidentiality. I need a motion.
I motion to maintain confidentiality.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made to continue confidentiality on the closed session minutes, motion was made by Linda Johnson and was seconded by Stacy Kimmel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion has passed.
Need a next meeting date.
So normally, it's the second Tuesday of the month, that's correct? Yes. So the second Tuesday of March is the eighth, making the first Tuesday the seventh. The first Monday, you mean? It's the first Monday, so it starts on Tuesday, it would be the first Monday of the month, that is right before the second Tuesday of the month. Okay, um, do you have a problem doing the second Monday of the month, then?
So that would make the next.
March fourteenth, does anyone have a problem with that?
It does, fourteenth.
That works out. Normally, it would be here. Be here instead.
That's fine. Six thirty. Does that need a motion and a second, that's, well.
No, it doesn't have time to vote, that's just an agreement.
Okay.
Next meeting date, March fourteenth, six thirty P M.
I can't hear you back here.
The next meeting date will be March fourteenth, a Monday, March fourteenth, at six thirty P M, all are in agreement.
We're now. We're now gonna go to the public speaking.
Orders review.
Huh?
Um, public speaking ordinance review, um, a trustee had asked that to be on the agenda, so we need to discuss that. So, right now, the five minutes is not working, feels like we are having more friction, and we are actually listening, and more arguments, and the five minutes has gone over every single time. So I'm requesting that we up it to ten minutes. I'm open to other options as well, but I don't think the five minutes is working, and I don't think the arguments are working either.
I don't think the ten minutes is gonna work either.
And I don't either, and I do know that, um, public speaking, that actually, unless the person asks us to be on the agenda before the meeting, and are assigned to have public speaking, we can give it to them. That at a public meeting, they do not always have to be acknowledged and given time to speak, what happens if you don't let them do that, then you end up having more, more friction. Five minutes is acceptable, it works. It doesn't work, it's not working at all. We, well, we need, we need more aggressive, when the floor is closed, the floor needs to be closed, or we need to go into recess, so that whoever's, um, overtaking their time, you can say what you need to say in less than five minutes. And if you can't, then. You're, you're abusing, you're abusing the floor, and I, I don't see us going longer than that, myself. So, I feel like five minutes is not working, you guys feel like ten minutes is not gonna work, can we up it to eight minutes? Anything at all, because they're not getting the time to talk, they. It's causing more problems having to call the law every time they come here than it is just giving them a couple of extra minutes, and I feel like you guys are not trying to meet in the middle at all with that. I definitely don't think they need the whole night, because you guys are right, they're gonna talk all night, because they have a lot of problems they wanna discuss, and I get that, but five minutes is a problem every single month.
Does the ordinance have to be changed?
Um.
Yep.
It is an ordinance that they are given five minutes, we would, um, we would have to contact the attorney and ask for more time, if the board backed and voted for that to take place. I am not prepared at this time to, um, vote in favor of that, if you'd like, we can table it, we can read up, read up on the Open Meeting Act.
Table what?
Table. By Linda.
So the motion has been made to table this discussion of the, uh.
Time.
Time limit for visitors to speak, and, uh, so people can have more time to review that, so motions have been made by Linda, and seconded by Stacy. And, uh, need a, uh, vote to table the discussion.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you said that for them to get more time, it needs to be put on the agenda? If they want more time, they can, they can call and ask to have the floor on the agenda, usually, people can do a presentation, if they're doing a presentation like water, um, cable, or something, they're coming in, usually, they can do it within fifteen to twenty minutes. But just to get up and speak about trash, we don't need twenty minutes.
Wait a minute, you said crap?
No, she said trash.
No, sir, I don't speak that way.
Okay.
So who do they call to do that, does it matter if they're in contact?
They leave a message.
Yes, they can leave it at the, yeah. And we definitely can put them in on the agenda. So what's next on the agenda, mayor? I believe it's, um, public comments, open the floor to public comments.
Open the, open the floor. Who would like to be first?
I would.
Take your name, please.
Bill Edwin. Hey, Claudia, uh, do you have the last month's trade report, that's what I was wanting to look at.
I would have to go find it, ma'am.
Well, I, I would like to have, because there's some things on it that really come up to my attention again. Uh, something about Chris Roberts, twenty-one meetings, we paid twenty-one meetings? That's kinda odd, did you look at it, honey?
Chris who?
You seen that?
Chris who?
Twenty-one hours, probably.
Well, it says men.
What's he talking about, Chris Roberts?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't Chris Roberts.
Huh?
It wasn't Chris Roberts.
Who was it, Chris?
Chris, uh.
Not Roberts, I didn't mean Chris Roberts, I meant Bob, sorry, honey.
Gotcha.
I seen your, I seen your name, I seen your name, and God love you.
You wasn't looking at this, and then handed back.
Actually.
You just got, you got, it won't take long, you just got a simple question here.
No, I did question, um, Lorraine on that, and she goes, oh, that was my typo, and she corrected it, she corrected it.
Typo, okay. Okay, that's what, here it is.
But I asked.
Let me see that.
That was, um.
Twenty-one hours, okay, they got twenty-one hours, something up here too, somewhere I've seen it.
That was the same one that we did attendance. It was on the attendance, moved the attendance.
Attendance, that's it, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, attendance, that's what, I thought, that had to be a typo there.
Yeah, it was, sorry.
It was, okay, that's what, that's, that's good, that's what I got, I think.
All right. That worked well.
Oh, okay, one more thing. I'm sorry, uh, is there any way we can have the people who water the county out here at meetings? Guess we got questions like that, or do they do still do our counting?
They don't do from that road down there all the way past, is that what you mean?
No, no, accounting.
Oh, the accounting.
Yes, accounting.
Oh, the bookkeeping, you wanna know if the bookkeeper.
Bookkeeper, in case we got any questions.
Um.
I think I asked that a couple of times, a couple of meetings ago. Because I go through the financials pretty close.
This one here has amounts of water payments that came in from different days.
But I have some things I've had questions about, I never did, nobody returned my, nobody couldn't get no answer to.
I will make sure someone asks for Bill.
Huh?
I will make sure someone asks.
You don't want me to ask if it's a possibility, if how much they even charge us, you don't want me, if they would charge us.
But they do charges for everything.
Yeah, they would charge.
But we're on a contract with them, correct? Did you guys negotiate that contract, you come to one meeting a month and listen to us, in case the people, because.
You're not really questioning the amount of money that comes in, you're questioning the amount that was paid.
Well, there's, there's, there's some.
No, he's out, he's questioning what the bookkeepers.
I look at this, I look at it very hard.
What, what keepers getting paid.
And I've asked some questions, and I think Gary even said, yeah, it'd be good if I did was here, because I asked, I never did get any answers out of some of my questions. Then they're going, they're going charged for being here. Yeah, I'm like, that's crazy, and, um. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we got a contract with them for how long?
Till we can find a treasurer.
What that girl, didn't they hire that girl to here the last meeting?
She ran away.
She was hired. She fired?
The mayor hasn't had a chance to.
Hired, she was hired.
Announce that. She was appointed last meeting.
Claudia, I'm gonna read it.
Go ahead, Claudia.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
To whom it may concern, Monday, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, I was appointed as Belmont Village Treasurer, and would like to put in my resignation effective immediately. My reason for resigning so quick is that there's too much drama and strife with the village people, and nobody can answer what that drama is all about. Thanks for the opportunity and good luck, Megan Ocking. And it's notarized here, so.
So actually, we go back to Walter's accounting.
Yeah, and, and. They never stopped.
Bill, it needs to be understood that Walter's accounting is our.
Okay, would it be okay if, uh, if I look at this, and when I get it, I could, I'll go through them, every one of them, just. If I got a question and you got an answer, how do I find the answer? Cause that's pretty important, our dollars and cents is very important.
When you call Walter and question how much time she's spent doing.
I look at them, of course, some of them ain't. I mean, I'm not saying the lines ain't right, but there's some things that's, just like having one of the typo where, I like, I found that myself. I find that in five minutes. And, uh, I think, you know, it's, it's business, it's business. And I want somebody to charge our business, I'm gonna ask him. You guys ought to pick up on that, you gotta look at them, and you get them, you all look at them, I mean, read them.
You, do you ask the question? Get them as fast as you do, Bill.
Honey, you.
Bill, I do look at bills.
When do you get this?
I got that paper, was it at the beginning of this week?
And you look at them, read them, look them, that'll do it?
So I'm gonna get you tickets.
They're always giving out forty-eight, forty-eight hours more prior to a meeting. Bill, I do look at the finances, and, um, if you have a question, you can direct it to me. Um, particularly if there's something, call it into the city hall and ask me to look up something.
Cause I'd ask something about, uh, having them out here and asking questions, but they're gonna charge, we can't do that, that'd eat us up.
I think we just need to find somebody who's willing to stay in this position, and if we can keep meetings as mellow as this, I think people are a lot more likely to stay. Because with all the heat, that girl, she was roughly my age, and all the heat that was going on, it's, it's too much.
It's crazy, it's crazy. And I think you got a good idea about the ten minutes, I know a lot don't believe that, but, uh, the law's getting tired of it. Law is sick of it, I know that, it's our tax dollars wasted, but. I appreciate it, but that's, I hate for her to have to come out and sit for an hour and not have no questions, so. All right.
We'll get there.
Thank you. Next.
I got a question.
The floor is open.
Huh?
Floor, the floor is open.
I was told I was talk, could talk under new business. Is this new business?
Well, yeah, but the floor is open, so.
This is public community.
I'm on the floor.
It's a public conference.
I'm on the floor. Uh, you ever go stand over there?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I stopped at the post office this evening, and, uh, I, I parked on the south side of the building, and I went through this giant hole, and I thought, man!
Nobody aware of it.
I got in and went, I talked to the lady, and I says, does anybody ever, you know, do you ever put in a, a request to have this hole filled up? And she said, that's where the mail truck parks, and he makes this big hole. And I said, well, you know, can't they fill it with rock or something? And she said, that the city does not maintain that road, it belongs to the railroad. And so I said, has the railroad been contacted about maintaining the road better? Cause there's two really big holes right there, and it's awful, and I, I always thought it was a public street. And she said, well, I don't know. So I don't know if there's anybody from the railroad that could be contacted to say, hey, can you do something with this road? It's awful. And it's, you know, with the post office being on the corner, it's used all the time. I just thought maybe, maybe the road, maybe there's a way to, to contact the railroad.
I can look at that this week, and see if I can find somebody to contact.
Okay, she said there's a telephone number on the.
Yeah.
I was gonna put something in it, and I was told like.
That's a lot.
Bounce me off the tractor one day, it's a big one.
Okay.
I believe that number two that I gave you, Damon, about the railroad ties.
Yeah.
That number will also work, they can, they can talk.
Okay, I'll get a hold of somebody, I'll, like I said, I'll try to get a hold of you either tomorrow or Wednesday, today's Monday, right? Tomorrow, Wednesday, I'm working, it's Wednesday, so we can get a hold of you on Wednesday.
Thank you, Claudia.
And I had, um, I had asked her too about that sidewalk, there's so shallow there that the snow and ice and mud puddles. And so that, and I think that is something that the village and the post office can work together on and fix. If they supply the concrete, we can, we can, uh.
Manpower.
Yeah, we can be the manpower to redo that. But of course, we can't do anything with weather right now, but that is on the list. If I'm not mistaken too, I know I heard the employees say that they are making a list of the, um, things that they wanna get accomplished this year to present to the board, to try to get budgeted in for what they know needs to be done. So, we'll ask Damon to sure get that on that list. We didn't want me to pick on you while you're here, but.
That's all right.
It's getting bigger.
David, John, you got any comments?
Yeah, I sure do. Um, for one, when I was on the board, we voted for the security cameras. Oh yeah, my name is John King, by the way.
I'm sorry, rep, Damon.
Sorry, and, uh, I will keep track of my own time, cause there's not a clock up there, I can't keep track of it, you guys have multiple clocks.
He's got it.
I can't see it up there, there, go away.
Well, you'll hear the dang, would you like me to?
It's okay, go ahead.
No, cause you don't run the meeting, the mayor does, and you don't run the meeting, the mayor does, per Open Meetings Act.
Please do not be rude.
Wasting your time.
A month in room, honey, how it is. So, my name's John King, my five minutes started. Uh, we voted for the, uh, the cameras to be up the park. Linda said they wouldn't vote in, I got right here in a minute, so we're just voting in three to one. When I was a trustee, I asked to see the cameras, they said they were in the safe, and the only person in combination was Christina James. Now that you're all here, you, Christina, or whoever wants to be transparent with the public, can ask them to unlock that safe tonight, and you have the power to show us those cameras. Also in the safe, I asked for, and I got accused by the city worker of stealing tools out of there. I asked for a list of the inventory list that was in there, they said that was also in the safe, we'd also like to see those. Um, another thing, you guys wanna go over ordinance, we can go over ordinance, I got a FOIA request right here of text messages from the clerk and Linda, uh, saying that, um, she went to the hospital to have papers signed out of city hall. Right here, administration, one dash two dash twenty-eight. Administration and the village ordinance code, one dash two dash thirty-one, official records, all official records, including corporate seal, shall be kept in village hall, and I have videotape of our last treasurer saying that Linda took them home with her when we was talking about the money and the grant money to this house. Belmont was supposed to be awarded eighteen thousand dollars, but we only got, I don't know, about three to five thousand dollars out of that. We could've fixed everything in town with that eighteen thousand dollars, ditches, everything. And you can look that up online even. I did. Another thing, keep going in circles, Bill's worker has tractors down his house, plowing his driveway. Taking the tractor down to his house, and I think we just got out of court for that. Stacy knows better, Linda knows better, and the mayor definitely sure as hell should know better. He got by the skin of his teeth. So if you want a copy of the law, and the spotlight will come down on Belmont again, I assure you. Cause I will take it too. Man, you can laugh all you want, but you wasn't laughing the last time when the watchdogs were here, and they will come again. And this time, the foot's being put down, and it's gonna stop. There's multiple videos of that tractor out there.
What did you just tell you the tractor was used, where?
Down at Damon's house.
No, it wasn't.
The hell with it, we got multiple videos and multiple pictures.
No, it wasn't.
All right, that's fine, you'll find out real quick. All right, my five minutes are starting over, cause I was interrupted by the mayor and the village boy. Per Open Meetings Act.
Sorry.
Per Open Meetings Act. So, I'm gonna start over again, got another five minutes, per Open Meetings Act. And Attorney General. And you can say all you want, I got accused of child trafficking, I got caught, I got accused of stealing the tools out here, it's all on video.
I'm gonna video my personal residence without.
Child trafficking.
Uh, breaking.
Yeah, how's that work out when you called the sheriff?
Don't worry about it.
Exactly, cause I done talked to the sheriff.
State attorney had a difference.
That's all right, we'll go talk to her too, don't worry about you being on the village tractor.
I'd love to go talk to her with you, but, let's go, I'm gonna take you up there.
Okay.
I'd love to go take you up there.
We'll see. I know, they interrupted me again. That's all right.
Five minutes over the time, you can make a little something, it's all right.
Yeah, oh yeah, the rules? Here you go, Bill, want a copy of the rules? Somebody else want a copy?
John.
Want a copy?
I'm gonna close the floor.
No, you're not, this is not, this is speaking, all right, that's fine, close the floor, I'm done talking, we'll see. Attorney General, what about?
You got something you need to say, Dave?
The way you just treated him?
I think you closed the floor.
His five minutes wasn't even up.
No, and I got interrupted multiple times.
Got interrupted?
Floor.
It's all right, we'll send it to Attorney General, and you can talk about ordinance, and all you want about public speaking, and that's why, cause you keep getting interrupted. Especially when Stacy yelled at my wife that night. And you guys wanted to hold speaking orders against us, but you turn around and yell at the public during their five minutes, or close the floor, or interrupt. Can't even get our five minutes, let alone ten minutes, cause you guys keep interrupting when you get cornered.
I saw a town worker go down there and clean his business off with a town tractor.
State's your game, please?
I got it on video, and then I turned around, called him today down there with a tractor again. Then he come out to my truck and jumped all over me, and accused me of tra, child trafficking and everything else, and stealing tools and stuff. That's, yeah, that's okay for him.
That's what I heard.
He accused me of, I wasn't there, I was.
I got it all on video.
He accused me on video of child trafficking.
My life about to come down, Belmont.
I don't know why you guys are gonna buy, uh, videotape of my kids.
And that's pretty serious business when you talk that.
Prove it.
That's pretty serious.
I got it on my surveillance.
Can prove it, can prove it, go ahead, put it online, where are your kids, where's your kids out in the yard at? Go ahead and prove it.
Prove something?
Go ahead and prove it.
Do you know what child trafficking is to accuse somebody? Yous ain't got a clue.
Prove it, where's your kids out in the yard, where we're going by? Exactly, yeah, that's what I thought. False accusations, and they don't scare me. I'll spend all day in that courthouse, bud.
I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else?
I got one more thing, one more question. Uh, the alley that's between, uh, Christina's house and the Christian church.
Is this Damon's five minutes still, or do you guys close the floor to the?
He said he was done.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, everybody couldn't interrupt people, we know.
The alley that runs between Christina's house and the Christian church always has a big water hole. If there's any rain at all, it has a big water hole. And some folks from the church have looked at that and determined that the, um, culvert under the alley, which is near the street, has collapsed. And since it's a culvert, they can't do anything to fix it, and we wondered if that's something that the city could take a look at and replace the culvert.
We got the culvert out there, it's the fall, it's a waterfall.
It's lit out there?
It's behind the Christian church.
Over here?
Yeah, not the Methodist church, it's Christian church.
My girl's house.
Used to be.
You know where my house is?
Yeah.
It's a giant, huge thing between me and the church, it is awful.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about.
That's what they use for their drive, wanted to get to the back.
Trucks that went through there, what was that about?
By my house, in the alley?
Yeah.
Last trucks I saw is mine and Owen's.
It's been some time ago.
It's been a long time, so.
No, no, I mean, past year. A few trucks went in there and left rusts.
Oh, Owen got, uh, he had a construction done, and they got stuck.
Okay.
It's really bad, that whole alley is terrible, and it's high traffic.
Well, I tell you, we have water that sits around town in a lot of places, so.
I thought that was one thing that could cut down mosquito, mosquito population you guys talked about.
Speaking of mosquito population, uh. Well, I just want to announce that, um, Mount Carmel will be getting, they got a new, uh, mosquito spray system, and will be letting their old one go, and so I have asked, could we consider looking at it? So if they in fact do, they will give us a, a prize, we'll bring it to the board and see what the locals about the price and that. Of course, if you do the mosquito spray, you do have to have some, some.
Me, I got my pocket.
Process that, not anyone can just operate it, but, just keep that in the back of our minds, don't forget.
I was gonna pay.
Okay?
John, I'm gonna pay him something.
Hey, Bill.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I whisper in your ear real quick about that?
I just wanna pay John something.
Can't whisper in there, I have to open the door with the Open Meetings Act.
Are you talking about?
No, I was talking to John, I was gonna pay John something.
I thought you was talking about.
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting ready to leave.
I was gonna help with that, so.
Oh, well, yeah, we need to do that, that's why I'd like to do that.
Well, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna go, but I'll wait.
You can talk to me after.
Christina made a motion to a juror.
She was pointing public speaking ordinance review, that was, that was your discussion, that was the time?
Yeah.
Okay. I motioned to a juror.
Need a second.
I'll make a motion, second. Motion's been made to adjourn the meeting by Linda Johnson, and it's been seconded by Stacy Kimball. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed. And the time is, uh, seven fifty-five.
I can't lie, there's only one thing on, while my husband's at home, it's just me and my kids, and we've got it on video. And I did contact the state attorney. Cause that makes me nervous, to leave my kids home by themselves.
Yeah, I would.
They're pressing. Hi.
Can you see the cameras tonight?
Oh, yeah, so, I need you to help me.
That's fine, one of them has a combination, or somebody. Christina James is the only one that has one.
You want to see, I've got the cameras and.
The, uh, inventory list, they said they had in the safe also, to all the tools out here. You have all power, you're allowed to have open record.
Yes, but, I can't talk to three people, cause it's a quorum, correct?
Um, there ain't three people, it's just you, her, and the mayor, so you can, you know, you do.
That would be a quorum, so it's you and the mayor.
Do you have the combination to the safe then, Linda?
No, I do not have a combination to the safe.
Who does, since Christina quit?
Uh, do you?
I know you know, cause you're in here all the time.
It has not been passed over to anyone yet.
Why not?
Cause we do not have a treasurer.
I don't matter, you guys need a combination to the safe, so it's just locked in there, nobody can touch it, could use an excuse as.
Well, he got a treasurer, lip?
Our treasurer resigned.
Well, that's your excuse?
She was unhappy with your attitude last time.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And that's okay, right?
Yeah, 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 okay. How'd you get a key to the city hall, Linda? I thought you didn't need one, or want one, or have one. That's what you said in the video when I was on the board, remember when the mayor flipped me off?
Unfortunately, my responsibilities have become much greater since all the harassment that has taken place.
Oh, harassment, oh, that's what we call it, asking questions?
Asking, well, I was on the board and you denied me, just like you denied the cameras, but it's right there in the minutes. How to take on great responsibility, well, I had responsibilities too.
Look at, look at my hand.
We call harassment now.
Call harassment, don't I have to?
Hmm? Are we getting harassed, they call us harassment?
Yeah, cause I asked her why she had a key.
Each time I got called, man, it's just called harassment.
I had very responsibilities now that we're getting harassed. Well, I had responsibilities too.
Damon denied him doing the tractor down there.
Yeah.
That's a lie.
Hmm? We got it on video.
Huh?
Got it on video. I guess I'm gonna just call State, State's attorney. State's attorney. Oh yeah, you can talk to her, she's real happy about you guys.
She is? That's what he said?
Something like that, yeah. I was like, yeah, I'm gonna talk to her, I'll go up there with you. You ain't going with me. So you sit there and lie?
I already gotta call him. And I'll probably have you send that video to him, cause I don't like him.
I don't either. You, you crossed the line there. Yeah, dude. Absolutely.
He did cross the line.
I'm trying to get uh, I'm trying to see the uh, the cameras and the
They gonna, they gonna give it to you?
Christina's trying to.
Okay. John, I'm sorry, man.
Hey, you're alright, man.
Who was laughing? The mayor was laughing about it?
One of them was. Somebody worried about that. That's what I told him. You don't should already know better. Hello? Uh, I was sitting here at the City Hall, they just got done with the meeting. Alright, we will. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Late rain. Okay, I'll be cool. Alright, I gotta go. Bye bye.
I asked to get in it, and it was told to me by both of them that Christina is the only one that has the combination, and they said that it hasn't even been opened since she left, so I can contact Christina. I don't know if I'm allowed to have the safe number, but Gary also said that he'd contact her.
I contacted her when I was on the board, and I get emails approved, and she just denied me. Well, I mean, you can, you can drive on me, I appreciate it. I see, what happened was, when I had the key down here, I just come down here to read the ordinance and stuff. And maybe you designed, the camera's not there, so you got to figure out, play the best guy.
Oh, gotcha.
And that's why I asked. I even asked Christina, and they're like, no, no. Long story short.
Well, I can talk to Christina. She's good friends with my family and see what
And I have no problems with Christina. I know everything, went down here, found stuff like that, but she's the only pretty much transparent one. And your mom, or your shit mom.
Yeah, I just, I don't understand how we can have a safe and not be in it, so I think that regardless of your guys' cameras and all the tools and all that stuff, we need to be able to get into it, so.
Absolutely.
We'll talk about one before the next meeting, okay?
Alright, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Peace.
Thank you.
Watch me get stuff.
Um, are you gonna get those FOIAs to me?
They've been mailed, they were mailed today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Uh, one of them may, yours may take longer to get there, because it was heavy enough, it couldn't be mailed first class.
Right.
And and I can't remember, there were two ways of doing it. And I can't remember which way, we, with the cheaper way of mailing it, but I don't know if it'll take longer or not to get there.
Yeah, that's fine.
But they both got mailed today.
Okay.
So.
We appreciate it, as long as you know.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Alright.
You have a good night. Be careful in your home. Still black ice out there, freezing back over.
I know. When, in the daytime, I try to uh drive in the slushy stuff
Yeah.
Break that up, so it'll get off the road, but I don't know how much it did. Now today, when I was out, it never was warm enough
Alright, yeah.